Okay. Everyone here? August Earlin and Lauren would be down there.
Yep.
So, everyone ready? Let's begin. Good evening, welcome to the Cortez Workshop Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, and it's 7:00 PM. I call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is interviews for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. The first person on the agenda is Katrina Weiss. Good evening, Katrina. Would you like to come up to the podium and introduce yourself and just say a few words about yourself, please? Is the green light on?
Oh, I think I did it. Test.
Yep.
Sorry.
It's working.
Good evening, my name is Katrina Weiss. I am a recent, fairly recent relocated to Cortez from southern New Mexico. Last August, we moved here. I am a State Farm agent here in Cortez. My home is in the Cortez city limits. I like to serve and do my civic duty, and I also have some experience with city and county government and citizen committees, and so I thought maybe I could lend some of that experience to our new home. I happen to have with me my senior in high school, Grace Weiss, and so I wanted her to kind of be here to see how city government works, and she's the reason that I'd like to... She and I have a new grandbaby on the way, too. The reasons I'd like to help do what I can to help Cortez grow, but in a responsible and economically viable way.
Thank you, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have some questions we'll ask you, and I'll begin with it. What do you think are the chief functions of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
So, it's my understanding that if the Planning and Zoning Committee can't resolve an issue that a citizen has requested or put before the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the Board of Adjustment and Appeals kind of meets to talk it over to see if a resolution can be found.
Okay. Thank you. Matt?
Sure. Thank you for being here, Katrina. Appreciate it very much. As a general statement, do you believe that the city's development standards are A, too strict, B, too lax, or C, at about the right level?
So, at the risk of saying too much before I know too much, because like I said, I've only lived here a year, I feel like there are some dilapidated buildings, maybe, that something could be done about, but other than that, I feel like it's growth-centered.
Rachel?
And Katrina, what do you think the chief... Oh, Mike already asked you that, sorry. What do you think is the biggest planning issue facing the city?
Again, I've not studied the issue too terribly much. Probably funding might be one thing, and possibly even lack of citizens stepping up. That both of those two things are probably a threat to the kind of growth and planning that we would like to have.
Okay. Robert?
One of the issues that we've had in our community is kind of division, especially across social media. How do you use social media, and how would you avoid any issues, I guess? Would be the best way to ask that.
Sure. Well, I am a business owner, and so I utilize social media for business. I also... My motto for myself, my family, and my team at work is, "If it's not edifying, then don't say it." And I would say that making divisive comments are not edifying, and so that's basically my philosophy. I don't talk about my political views on social media. On occasion, I might post a scripture, but if that is off limits, then I definitely will pay attention to what the city would like to see.
Okay. Thank you. David, do you have a question?
Yes, as soon as I turn on my microphone. Welcome, Katrina.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. This is a tough question, I think. Are you familiar with the purpose of the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Use Code? And to what degree?
So, I'm not familiar with Cortez necessarily, or Monizuma County. I have been involved in past places where I've lived with comprehensive plans, with annexation, with landscaping ordinances, a lot of different divisive issues from both the citizenry side, but also working for the city and the county. I, of course, will do my due diligence to learn Cortez and Monizuma County, but at this point, no, I'm not super familiar with the specifics in this geography.
Thank you, I certainly understand.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions? Okay, thank you very much, Katrina. We're trying to keep it short, you know, so not too much stress on you. We appreciate your being here and stepping up for this job.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next person we're going to interview is Alan Rolston. Good evening, Alan. Would you come up to the podium and introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, my name's Alan Rolston. I've been a resident of Cortez for four years, and I've got a varied background, but I had a lot of experience in municipal government and serving on councils and administration of cities. So, I kind of like Katrina, I felt like I had some useful experience that I could volunteer to the city for this job, so...
All right, thank you. I'll start again. What do you think are the chief functions of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
Well, you hear appeals either from the planning officer or from a citizen. It feels like the planning committee commissioned, or the city planners didn't make a fair decision for him, and so you'd have to... And then, maybe there's appeals with setbacks, or how much coverage you have on a lot and things like that, that we have to look at and make sure that they reach some kind of fair settlement, if that can be done.
Thank you. Matt?
Welcome, Alan.
Thank you.
As a general statement, do you believe that the city's development standards are A, too strict, B, too lax, or C, just about the right level?
Well, I'm not real familiar with them, but it seems like we're in a pretty good spot with those right now. There may be some specific items that need to be looked at, but it just feels like the city's on a good path, to me.
Alan, what do you see as the biggest planning issue facing the city?
Well, lately, I think it's like affordable housing. At least in our neighborhood, it seems like houses are going up, but... And then, I think internet's real important, even though I'm not a techie guy, but I've been a businessman, and I don't see how you can run a business nowadays unless you ever really get internet service. So, I look forward to the city maybe facilitating that to happen. So, also, maybe one other thing, since I'm a water guy, I worry about the long-term water supply for us.
Right, yeah. Okay. Robert?
How do you use social media, or how would you use it to not create division in the community?
That's a tough question, because I can barely use email. And I don't know, that's such a... It seems to me like when you get on... When people get on social media, they can forget all their manners and not be civil, and it's easy to rip people apart when you're sitting at your desk away, but you wouldn't say the things they say on that to your face, which disturbs me, so I don't really know how you regulate that. I don't use Facebook or anything like that very much, just to keep track of my grandkids or something, but that's it, so I guess I kind of ignore it.
All right, David?
Welcome again, Alan.
Thanks, Dave.
My question is the same. The... How familiar are you with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Use Code, speaking of division?
I'm not real familiar with the details of it. I failed to be a good citizen in that regard, probably. I haven't looked at it that much.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate your interviewing with us tonight, and, you know, we'll probably... We will be just covering this in the regular agenda, and we'll reconvene at 7:30 after the workshop.
Okay.
Thank you again.
So, you'll make a decision, then?
I believe so, yes.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, we're right on schedule. Next item on the agenda is General Council Discussion. Are there any items that the councilors like to address tonight? Seeing none, I'll adjourn this workshop, and we'll reconvene at 7:30. Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Cortez City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, and it's 7:30 PM. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll call the meeting to order. If you will please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The listing under Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or council member may request an item be removed from the Consent Agenda prior to the council's vote. If a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the Consent Agenda for discussion, please indicate it now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove items E and F. E, because I... It involves KSJD, and I need to recuse myself from that item, and F, because I'd like to get a little bit of a report from our finance director. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the rest of the Consent Agenda.
Second?
Medina?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Citizen Participation.
Mr. Mayor, we need to pick up those two items that we pulled out.
Oh, yeah.
E.
Yeah. The two items are removed, the approval of a special events permit for the CREA, Cortez Retail Enhancement Society, and the approval of the July financial report. Okay. Item three, Citizen Participation.
Er, hold on, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special event permit to be hosted by the Cortez Retail Enhancement Association for fundraiser for KSJD to be held at Monizuma Park, located at the corner of Mark's Market Street and Monizuma Avenue on Thursday, September 9th, 2021, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second?
Keef offer?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now, it's time for your Citizen Participation.
Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. July financial report. Kelly, would you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, esteemed council members. I'm Kelly Kosky. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Cortez. So, included in your packet was the financial statement for July of 2021. There was one correction that needed to be made, so I included that correction, passed out that first sheet. It was on the very first page. That was just me getting way ahead of myself, trying to, I think, just do too much all at one time. So, once we printed the report at a later date, all of the figures were in there. I'm really pleased to see that the revenue trends are continuing and that upward motion that we've had for the last over a year. You'll notice that the sales tax revenues, even though we are only through July of 2021, are at 75.4% of what was projected for 2021. You'll also notice that the building permits are out at 155% of what was projected, which is really, really amazing. And then, you'll also notice on Page 2, the state marijuana tax is also at 91.4% of what was projected for the entire year, even though we're only in July. So, really good news for the city. Does anybody have any other questions?
I don't believe any other questions. Thank you for the encouraging news. We appreciate that. Kelly, thank you again.
Finally, some good news from finance.
Yeah. Keep it up. Thank you. Okay. Motion on this?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the July financial report.
Second?
Medina?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, Citizen Participation. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak on any topic on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. There are no presentations, no public hearings, unfinished business. We'd like to make an appointment to the Boards of Adjustment and Appeals. It was tabled at the council meeting on August 10th, 2021, and the council will consider appointing new members to the Board of Appeals and Adjustments. Linda?
Here, I'll speak, Councilmember Medina. So, as far as I understand from Linda, we have two positions open for the Board of Adjustment Appeals and two alternate positions. So, I would like to put up a motion that we appoint Katrina Weiss and Alan Rolston for positions on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and have Lance McDaniel as an alternate.
Second?
See, I would... See, Lance has had a lot of experience in the city Board of Adjustments, or Planning and Zoning, and he's been active in the community, and I would like to see him as a member on the Board of Adjustments instead of an alternate. That's my opinion.
I think I would agree with that opinion.
Council, would you like to make a... Take a vote on the motion that was made and go from there if it doesn't pass?
Okay.
All right, we'll take a motion, or we'll take a vote on the motion made by Mayor Protim Medina, seconded by Councilman Dobree. Keef offer?
No.
Dobree?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Rainey?
No.
Levy? Levy?
No.
So, would you like another motion to be made by council?
Matt, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Lance McDaniel and Katrina Weiss to the permanent positions, and Alan Rolston as an alternate.
Second? Rainey?
Aye.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye. Thank you.
So, we'll continue on. We've made our vote. Under new business, we have a quasi-judicial item set up. We'll set a hearing date for a new retail marijuana cultivation facility for THA Corporation, DBA, the Herbal Alternative. City Clerk Linda Smith or City Attorney Mike Green, please.
Tonight, we just need to set a public... Sorry. Tonight, we just need to set a public hearing on this matter, and then we'll move forward with having a hearing, a quasi-judicial matter on the application, and hear from the applicants and staff. And I believe we want to ask you to set it for September 14th of 2021.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing date of September 14th, 2021, for the review of the new retail marijuana cultivation facility for THA Corp., DBA, the Herbal Alternative, to be located at 10194 Highway 491 Cortez.
Second?
Rainey?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 20, Series 2021. City Planner Tracy Hughes, good evening, Tracy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can I plug in the laptop real quick?
Okay.
So, this is a request for approval of a subdivision improvements agreement between the city and Grant Smith, the developer. Downey Avenue in the Chemnitz subdivision is not currently constructed. This is an older subdivision that was platted, I think, in 1959, and there are currently no utilities to serve the platted lots adjacent to Downey Avenue and Blocks D and E. Prior to accepting the street and the water line, the developer is required to submit construction drawings that need to be approved by the city engineer to ensure that these improvements meet city standards, and the subdivision improvements agreement is required to be in place according to the Land Use Code to ensure that the developments, the improvements are completed. So, that agreement entails a financial security that the city can pull if it needs to to complete the improvements. The construction drawings and the cost estimate were approved by the city engineer, and the developer, Grant Smith, has provided the insurance documents and a draft irrevocable letter of credit to the city attorney, so the city attorney does have those to review, and staff recommends approving the agreement and authorizing the signature of the mayor upon final receipt of the insurance agreement and the irrevocable letter of credit from the developer. So, any questions?
There's one thing I just want to... I'm not sure you have the most updated certificate of insurance. There was a couple of problems with the first one they sent, but they corrected them, and I've since forwarded on to Tracy. I just don't know which ones in the packet.
We didn't include one in the packet, yeah.
Okay, so there is one that was more in line with what the Land Use Code requires.
Tracy, this is just an extension of the existing street, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so, it gets built to city standards, and then we adopt it and take over it? Okay, that's correct. And there will be sidewalks? The sidewalks are required when they put in the homes along the street, so I... My understanding is they're really intending to build the street out, so they should be installed when that... When all... Each lot gets built with a single-family residence.
Any other questions? Motion on this item, please?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the Downey Street subdivision improvements agreement between the City of Cortez and Grant Smith Developer through Council Resolution Number 20, Series 2021, with the conditions that were outlined, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement upon receipt of all required documents. Second?
Dobree?
Aye.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 21, Series 2021. City Attorney Mike Green, please.
This is a simple resolution approving a contract for the software to go with, I believe it's called Agenda... Agenda Plus? Agenda Quick. It'll help get things better organized quickly, more accurately for council, staff, transparency. It's an annual contract, which automatically renews, is my memory, so it doesn't require an ordinance, even though it talks about four years' worth of payments. This is an annual contract, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions from the council? Could I have a motion on this, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Destiny Software, Inc., for software dedicated to the purposes of Agenda and other meeting-related content. Resolution Number 21, Series 2021.
Second?
Second.
Medina?
Aye.
Dobry?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Keefhoffer?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, see, are there any city attorneys report?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, city managers report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've got four items to report on this, this evening, uh, from the last two weeks. Uh, first and foremost, our ClearGov Transparency Module. I'm pleased to announce that, uh, the Transparency Module was rolled out to the public yesterday in the form of a press release and links added to our website. The city is requesting the residents access the site and become familiar with the city finances. We're also asking for residents to weigh in on what they think our spending priorities should be for fiscal year 2022. I'm especially excited about this, since the public generally only has but few ways to become involved with the budgeting process. How, uh, historically, uh, most input is received during the public hearing phase of the process, which is essentially the end of the process. Uh, this will now give us the capability to allow what I hope will be a more robust community dialogue on our finances. Number two, the department heads and their administrative staffs are actively engaged in preparing their preliminary figures for our 2022 budget. Uh, department head meetings with the finance team will begin on the first of the month in preparation for the council presentations later in September. Our water tank maintenance project is nearing completion. I was, uh, privileged to tour the project this past Friday with Mayor Levy and Mayor Tor, Protam Medina. It was very impressive to see the scope of work and the level of detail and quality assurance that goes into this type of project. I was, uh, left with the impression that we're in very good hands with our contractors and our city staff. And number four, our IT team is working on upgrading our city website. It is hoped that we can obtain the necessary cost and design estimates in the near future so we can build our new ti, site in time for rollout as near as possible to the first of the year. And that's all I have, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, City Manager. Are there, uh, any city council committee reports?
Uh, I just want to emphasize what a great tour it was of the water tank. Um, really unique experience to go inside it, so thank you for letting us do that.
Okay. I enjoyed that myself, it's quite an experience to be inside the 2 million gallon water tank and, uh, seeing the amount of work being done there, uh, uh, and the professionalism and the detail, uh, it's very, very encouraging to know how, how well our city is being taken care of, you know, by our public works people and, and all the people involved in the city. Uh, kudos to the public works. Okay, uh, so I have several items on committees. Uh, I attended the Southwest COG, uh, Zoom meeting. Uh, Drew was in, in attendance. Uh, we discussed several things. Uh, Shannon Fuller, the auditor, uh, gave the results of the Southwest COG, um, audits, and there's no major findings. Uh, another item on the, their agenda was, uh, housing funding, uh, and there are several bills that were discussed. The SB 21 dash 242, which is the stimulus bill. Uh, there's a HB 21 dash 1271, that's a state stimulus, uh, bill. And the HB 21, 1329, that's the ARPA, the recovery, and that covers, uh, affordable housing and home ownership. So, um, we're, we're working with this group to, uh, uh, help, uh, recover from the, from this, uh, financial crisis we found ourselves in during the COVID. Um, they discussed, uh, the, the draft of the 2122 budget for, uh, for COG, and, uh, and we discussed the, a grant for the MORP, the, the Orchard Grant. Uh, let's see, we discussed the grant for, uh, broadband, and it's approved. Uh, uh, fiber to the premises, Cortez to Delores. And, um, we discussed, uh, DOLA, uh, having some plans for workforce development and, and housing in the future. Uh, I also attended, uh, one of our first, uh, library advisory board meetings. Uh, we met at the library, uh, on August 18th, uh, and, uh, we welcomed Isabella as our new, uh, library director. And she just, uh, uh, told us that, uh, they are interviewing for a replacement for her position. Also, uh, in, uh, September 15th, there will be a Mesa Verde Dark Skies presentation in the parking lot of the library from 7:30 to 10:00. And that, that will be in person, and they'll be discussing the dark skies and the, and the stars in this area. We discussed the friends of the library and, uh, 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 in keeping it separate from the, this, the city, uh, uh, library business. So, uh, we also spoke about the HVAC system, uh, where they're going to be, uh, updating it, and it's going to be the tune of $500,000, I believe. And, uh, spoke about the plans for the renovation of the library in the future. And, uh, they're talking about the computer upgrades for the computers in the library. Uh, right now, they have 11 laptops that are available for, uh, checkout. And one of the things that the library board was, uh, discussing was, uh, selling merchandise bags with the library logo, uh, so people wouldn't have to use plastic bags to carry their books. Kind of like the, like the stores, supermarkets, uh, encouraging you to bring your own bags instead of using the plastic bags. Trying to be a good example. Uh, and, uh, discussed the possibility of possibly, uh, checking out other items uh, in the library, like, uh, tools, uh, and non-traditional things, uh, not just books or, or computers, uh, and one person even mentioned, uh, uh, some libraries, uh, will, uh, check out sewing machines, because there's a lot of quilters in this area that would be interested in chucking out a, a sewing machine, and if they don't have one. Uh, see, most of the plants are taken from the library now, and, uh, we're discussing getting replacement plants, and we'll check with some local nurseries and, uh, people that are able to, uh, um, donate or give or supply plants for the library. Let's see, uh, we, they're discussing how often to meet, and maybe once a month, or we're still going to discuss that. Uh, they wanted to have, uh, press items, uh, and we need to, uh, contact the, uh, Cortez Journal to give news, uh, what's happening in the, in the library. And, uh, also, they're discussing, you know, having more, uh, authors, local authors be present to, uh, uh, talk about their works and, uh, introduce themselves to the, to the community. So it, it was a, a, a good meeting. Uh, we got, got a lot covered, and it was good to see the library advisory board back in action with our new library director. Okay, and the last item, my committee, is the, uh, workshop. Uh, we covered the workshop at seven o'clock this, this evening. Uh, we interviewed, uh, two people for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Katrina Weiss and Alan Ralston. And, uh, we, we made a decision to appoint Lance and Katrina to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and Alan Ralston as an alternate. Okay, uh, are there any other items?
Yeah. I got it.
You need to make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, yeah. Uh...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 2464022FI. Um, do I need to read the whole shebang?
Yes, sir, and add for legal advice from your attorney.
I will, okay. Um, and not involving any specific employees who've requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office to, uh, of this body or any, or of any elected official, or personnel policies that do not require discussion of matters personal to particular employees. Discussion will be held regarding a possible personnel action and to receive advice from our attorney.
Okay, we'll, we'll adjourn this regular meeting.
Second.
Medina?
Aye.
Dobry?
Aye.
Keefhoffer?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye. Okay, we'll adjourn this section, uh, and go to executive session, and we'll return after the executive session is finished. Thank you. Okay. Uh, the time is now 8:35 PM, and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive, executive session were Rachel Medina, Robert Dobry, Matt Keefhoffer, David Rainey, Drew Sanders, Mike Green, and myself. Uh, the, for the record, if any person who participated in, in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive, executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask you to state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. I call this meeting adjourned. Good evening.